Gentlemen, welcome to today's meeting of Liverpool City Council's Virtual Planning Committee. Before I formally start today's proceedings, just a few brief practical requirements that I need to undertake to confirm everyone present in terms of the membership of the committee can see and hear correctly. So with that in mind firstly, the Chair, councillor O'Brien, can you see and hear us okay?
I can, thank you Michael.
Excellent, thank you and welcome. Next to the Deputy Chairs, councillor Conception.
Yes Mike, I can see and hear you, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson.
Yes, good morning Michael, thank you.
Thank you. Now we turn to the remaining members who are councillor Hanson.
Yeah, loud and clear.
Thank you. Councillor Juarez.
Yes, loud and clear, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Marat. Thank you. And councillor.
Yes, I'm here, I can hear you well.
Excellent, thank you. Having checked the attendance, that appears to be the current list of members present in terms of the committee and the committee is indeed courted. Just for benefit of everyone present, councillor Radford, who is also a member of this committee, will be joining us in a few minutes' time. However, he will be participating as local ward councillor only for the final item of business and speaking and will not therefore be voting, depending on obviously that being confirmed once he joins us. In terms of practicalities before I move into a few brief procedural requirements, Chair, if you'd obviously like to make a few comments, is this being our first meeting of the new year?
Yes, thank you Michael, welcome everybody. Thanks to all of you who've got here today. We have a shorter agenda than usual. We are going to resume our meetings to be on a Tuesday, from what I understand of it, which is returning to what we used to do. If you remember, we did expect some of our meetings to be streamed from the council chamber and that wasn't free on a Tuesday morning. But seeing as all our meetings are now entirely virtual, we can go back to our original day of Tuesday. And we also are going to change the format of planning, but not so people don't get a say. We always enabled people to get a say in Liverpool, unlike some other local authorities. So happy new year and let's hope it gets better as we go along. And Michael, I hand back to you now.
Thank you Chair, much appreciated. Obviously in terms of our agenda today, first of all I need to check if there's any formal apologies been reported to colleagues. I haven't had any advice directly to me, but if the Chair or Deputy have had any reported directly to them, if they could now please both indicate.
No, I haven't. I haven't heard from councillor Cumming, so he normally does get in touch with me, rather than the committee clerk, I notice. I haven't heard from him. But I take it that we take councillor Radford as having made apologies.
Provided councillor Radford is able to attend in part, he will be counted as participating Chair.
Okay, well that's clear, thank you.
With that in mind, obviously we'll now move on to a declaration of interest. So do those members present at this stage have any to declare? Okay, no, just noting of course, obviously as and when we're able to bring councillor Radford in, clearly in the event that he does wish to speak and has made prior representations, then he'll be required to make an appropriate declaration and I'll remind him of those requirements accordingly when we come to that item. Next we move to the minutes of our last meeting, which was held on the 16th of December, quite a long way ago now. Relatively brief minutes, pages four to eight of your agenda pack. So could colleagues please indicate verbally and by nodding your head if there's any issues with your audio, just to confirm if you're agreeable to those.
Agreed.
Excellent, thank you everyone. Now in terms of obviously urgent items of business, I'm pleased to report there were no urgent issues for me to advise you of today or to report on. So with that in mind, we will therefore move on to our first formal item of business today. Item number four on your agenda. This application relates to the location at the Allerton and Police Fire Stations, situated on Rose Lane, Liverpool 18, which are located in Church Ward. Chair, you will note from your papers that we have only one speaker for this particular application, this being the agent for the application and they are indeed present to address us today, if you care to invite them in and obviously I will then display a suitable presentation to assist.
Thank you for that, Michael. Unfortunately with the problems I've had getting in, I've not been able to open up my list of speakers, so I don't remember the name of the speaker, but if I could invite the person who's the agent or architect for the police and fire station to speak to us now and introduce themselves please.
Chair, if I can welcome Mr Robert Novelli, who's the agent for this particular application. He will shortly be doing a voiceover of the presentation and once that appears on screen, which he will do very shortly now.
Okay, thank you Michael.
You should all have it on screen, Mr Novelli, if you'd like to talk us through the presentation.
Thank you Chair. Good morning, good morning members. Today I'll be presenting the minor amendments proposed to the approved conversion of the former Allerton Fire Station and Police Station Buildings into residential accommodation. This application is seeking to vary two planning conditions attached to the original approval. Condition number two and condition number nine. In today's brief presentation, I'll be outlining the proposed minor amendments to the design and layout of both the former police and fire station buildings. And I'll be starting with the former police station building. If you go to the next slide please. The former police station building shares a western boundary with number nine Mather Avenue, which is currently used as a beauty spa. Under the current planning approval, it was proposed that approximately 50% of the existing building elevation, which sits along this boundary, be demolished in order to deliver the desired scheme. As part of this amendment's application, we're proposing to retain more of the existing building along this shared boundary, resulting in less demolition work and hopefully reduce the amount of disruption to the beauty spa during the construction phase of works. In order to deliver this design amendment, we've had to alter the proposed building's footprint as well as make minor amendments to the internal layout of the building. The approved layout can be seen on the left-hand side of the screen. And on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see the proposed amendment. The area in question is outlined in a red box. The alteration to the building layout in this corner has been made possible in part by moving the internal escape stair externally. In doing so, we freed up enough space within the building to deliver amended proposals, which offer an identical mix of accommodation to that which was previously approved. The change to the building footprint in this area has also prompted a slight amendment to the layout of the rear amenity space and parking court. And as a result, this amendment has yielded an additional parking space. Next slide please. This slide demonstrates the proposed change to the elevation along the shared boundary with the beauty spa. Again, on the left-hand side you can see the proposed as approved and on the right-hand side you can see the amendment. And as previously mentioned, this amendment seeks to retain more of the existing police station building and thereby reducing the disruption to the beauty spa. As with the current approval, no windows or openings are proposed along this elevation to ensure that there is no overlooking issues. Next slide please. This slide demonstrates the change to the rear elevation of the proposed police station building. The most notable new feature of this elevation being the helical or spiral staircase. This external staircase has been designed to nestle into the building, so as not to impact on any adjacent occupier or wider visual amenities. And this concludes the proposed amendments to the former police station building. If you can go to the next slide please, we can take a look at the former fire station building. Since the time of the original approval being received, we have revisited the ground floor layout of the three central units proposed within the fire station building with a view to improving living quality and overall accessibility. What you can see on the screen here is a section cut from front to back through the ground floor of the central unit. As you can hopefully see, we've redesigned this, which is a former fire appliance bay into an open plan kitchen, living, dining area, which we feel greatly improves upon the previous layout. Next slide please. The front door design of the former fire station has also been revisited as part of this amendment, again to improve the living quality and accessibility of the ground floor. The desirable central door location has been made possible by the previously mentioned open plan amendments. We feel this amendment not only improves the building from an end user's point of view, but also that the Mather Avenue streets and also benefits from a result of a more balanced and higher quality elevation. And this concludes the proposed amendments to the former fire station building. Lastly, I would just like to acknowledge the proposed amendment to condition number nine. This application seeks to omit the requirement for the overspill laid by parking bays on Rose Lane due to the proposal of sufficient parking spaces provided within the site. And that's all from me, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Novelli. Are there any questions for Mr Novelli please?
Don't appear to be any Chair at this stage, as members can indicate quite clearly now. Councillor Conception.
Councillor Conception.
Thanks Chair, could I just ask the agent really, in relation to the fire station, in relation to the spiral staircase? I mean, are these apartments for over 55s? Is that the only means of accessing the top floor?
No, it's not. It's a fire escape stair. The principal movement vertically through the building will be via a central core. There is also a lift present within the building. This is merely, what you're dealing with is an end of corridor situation. So this is merely used as an escape stair in the event of an emergency.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Right, thank you Mr Novelli. Can I hand over now to our case officer, Stuart Clark?
Thank you Chair, Stuart Clark from the South team. You've just had a very detailed presentation as to what the proposed design changes are to the building and I don't intend to go through those again, as I think it was very clear as to how the architect explained those two members. This is a variation of a consent granted in 2020 for 40 sheltered units within the extended police station, five townhouses in the fire station and reinstating former accommodation as two dwellings. To this extent, the principle of the quantum and type of development has already been considered to be acceptable. As I've explained, this proposal seeks to vary that consent to allow for design changes, the addition of further parking bay within the courtyard and to remove the previously approved parking bay on Rose Lane. Your officers consider that the design changes that you've been walked through are acceptable and will reduce impacts on the spa through less demolition and that they're acceptable from a visual amenity point of view without detriment to any nearby occupier. No objections have been received in connection with any of those design changes. The parking courtyard will be reconfigured to introduce a further Chevron parking space, which will allow for further off-street parking, which is welcomed. The main change relates to the removal of the previously approved labour, parking labour on Rose Lane and this has been the subject of the objections raised in relation to parking provision and highway safety. The proposed level of parking that's being provided for the proposal is considered to be acceptable and compliant with our standards. However, the head of highways and transportation considers that additional measures are still required to prevent on-street parking occurring on Rose Lane. Those measures will take the form of the introduction of no waiting orders on both sides of Rose Lane outside the development and the introduction of a mandatory cycle lane. The head of highways and transportation considers that the combination of the amount of off-street parking and no waiting measures proposed are such that there would be sufficient off-street parking provision to serve the development of this type and that the on-street highway measures will prevent on-street parking so as to ensure highway safety is not compromised. The proposal will still be subject to the relevant level of section 106 requirements detailed in the report and the four trees being planted within the site to partly offset the street tree requirements are of a species that will achieve a size consistent with that of highway street trees. The proposed design changes and additional parking spaces are therefore considered to be acceptable and welcomed and that the revised on-street highway arrangements would be such so as to ensure that there will be no undue impact on highway safety and therefore we're happy to recommend the scheme to you Chair for approval.
Thank you. And Tony, I don't know if you have your hand up for this one or whether you've still got your hand up for the last. Okay.
Thanks Chair, no, it's okay.
Okay, so are there any other questions for the case officer before we move to the vote? Councillor Juarez.
Yes, thank you. Could the officer tell me the amount of car parking spaces that are going to be in this scheme?
Just bear with me Chair, I'm just going through the report. Yes, figure me chair, I'm not sure this is actually in the report because the level of car parking is more than was approved last time. Andy, have you got that information in front of you, Andy Dingwall?
Yeah, thanks, thanks Stuart. Thanks Chair, Andy Dingwall, Highway Development and Control Team leader. There's 29 car parking spaces across the whole site. Each of the dwellings have their own dedicated off-street car parking space and the flats have a shared car parking arrangement.
Okay, thank you for your response.
And I think it has come in Andy about the fact that because we've got an extra car parking space, we don't need a bay on the main road, which is better.
Yeah, I mean, the development as it is, and as previously approved to a large extent, was self-sufficient in terms of the parking demands, the demands anticipated for the development of this nature could be accommodated wholly within the site itself. It was really an opportunity that was taken to formalise some parking arrangements that took place on Rose Lane previously. You know, our view is that it's not absolutely necessary for this development to do that and the space, the highway space is probably better utilised to make provision improved for cyclists. So there'll be a dedicated cycle lane on each side of the road and there'll be no waiting restrictions and that will certainly provide a better link for cyclists along that route.
Thank you for that Andy. Are there any other questions? So can I move that the recommendation as amended be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair, are there any further comments from members just before I formally conduct the vote? No, in which case firstly Chair, your vote.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson. Councillor Hanson. Thank you. Yeah, I can do now, thank you. Councillor Marat. Thank you. And councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you. And lastly councillor Juarez.
Agreed.
In terms of those members eligible to vote, the voting is unanimous and on that basis the application is therefore approved. At this juncture as well, can I also welcome councillor Radford, who has now joined us for proceedings for the remaining items. He may well be experiencing some technical issues at this moment, so he won't come in at this juncture and he's likely to come in and out whilst the technology permits, but he is endeavouring to join us for the final item of business. With that in mind, we will therefore move on, noting those comments to our next item of business, which is number five on today's agenda and which relates to the central reservation opposite number 168 Egbert Road, Liverpool 17. And for purposes of clarity for benefit of members, that is located within St Michael's Ward. For the benefit of colleagues present today, we do not have any registered speakers for this application, either for or against. However, to assist in your consideration of the application, I am going to display some images on screen and I would ask the case officers to comment accordingly once they appear very shortly on your respective screens. So thank you for your patience while those appear.
And over to you Stuart Clark.
Thank you Chair, just wait for the images. Okay. So members will be familiar with the issues surrounding telecoms masts. This is actually a resubmission of one that was withdrawn. The previous application was submitted originally at 20 metres, but they never engaged with Auckland College, which is a requirement of the MPPF, so therefore they withdrew the application. Since withdrawing it and resubmiting it, they've revisited the size of it at our request and it's been reduced down to 17 and a half metres, which is the smallest they can get it to ensure and the relevant cell coverage is required. They've explored all alternative sites in terms of existing buildings and discounted them, which we accept. There's an existing mast approximately 100 metres away, which is only about 11 to 12 metres high and is largely screened by trees. So in terms of the cumulative impacts, the two don't really have a visual connect because of the tree cover which screens it. So this is very much seen in isolation. It's considered, it's not totally clear whether it's in or on the edge of the conservation area, but it's been assessed as being in for the purposes of the application and the conservation officer is happy that given its context within a central reservation on a main arterial road, that she considers there'll be no detrimental impact on the character of the conservation area. Most of the objections have come from the nearby Auckland College and parents of schoolchildren attending that. Many non-material objections such as they would pull their kids out of the school, that's a decision for the parents, it's not something that we can consider as part of this application. As ever with all of these applications, what you're being asked to consider is a balance between the benefits that 5G technology brings against the visual harm. Clearly by introducing a mast into the townscape, there is some degree of harm. However, your officers consider that given its location, the central reservation, which is where we try to get the type of things located so as to be as far away as possible from residential properties and where you tend to find taller street furniture, such as streetlights and other vertical furniture, we consider this is the most appropriate location. So given the social and economic benefits that 5G technology will bring, for example, home learning, assisting with that sort of thing and future vehicle technologies, we're happy that any limited harm that would come from the visual impact from mast is outweighed by the benefits that the 5G would bring and therefore we're happy to recommend it Chair for approval.
Thank you Stuart. And before I invite any questions, I wanted to comment that I probably do have a bit of an interest in the mobile technology in this area because it has improved enormously since the other mast was improved and that affects my mobile phone company. And we did have four letters unusually in support saying that it was so bad at the moment for some of the phone companies that for people in that area, some of them do welcome that we're going to have another mast. And as we know, these mobile phone companies don't share technology to a large extent. So we do seem to need two masts in the area and this has been the pattern in other areas of the city as well. So are there any questions for the case officer? I can see councillor Conception's got his hand up, but I think that's from last time. So I'll invite councillor Juarez.
Yeah, in the report it says it has this 26 objections. These 26 objections, are these from this particular application or are these objections from the previous application?
This is from this application. The previous application, if memory served, did have a lot more objections, but we can only report objections that have been received in response to this round of consultation for this particular application and that's how we've assessed it. To be fair, the issue's raised a little different from last time, albeit the numbers may be slightly different in terms of what was raised. But in terms of the responses that we've received to this particular application that you're being asked to consider, they're the ones detailed in the report.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? I don't see anybody indicating. So can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Well thank you Chair, any further comments from members? No, in which case Chair, your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception.
I have to leave the meeting to answer the door, so I never hear the full.
In which case you're ineligible to vote. Thank you for drawing that to our attention. Moving on to councillor Hanson. Thank you. Councillor Marat. Thank you. Councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
And councillor Juarez.
Against.
Would you like your dissent recorded councillor Juarez?
Yes, please.
I will do so in a minute for you, thank you. Just to confirm, in terms of those eligible to vote and participating, five members have voted in favour, one member has voted against councillor Juarez, the effect of which means that the application is therefore approved on that basis. With that in mind, we will therefore move on to our next and final item of business, number six on today's agenda, which relates to property at number 35 Timwell Hill, Liverpool 13, which is located within Tubook and Stony Croft Ward. As colleagues will be aware, at the start of proceedings and indeed joint proceedings, I did indicate that local ward councillor Steve Radford will be endeavouring to join us for proceedings for this item and to address in his capacity as a ward councillor. Unfortunately councillor Radford does not appear to be on the meeting at this juncture and we have endeavoured to bring him on on a number of occasions. So obviously as a committee, you are still entitled to continue to determine the application, noting obviously that councillor Radford has made a number of attempts to join us for the particular item of business. To draw your attention, in the absence of councillor Radford, I have neither applicant or agent or indeed any other speakers on the application. So to assist you as ever in terms of considering the proposals, I'm going to display on screen a number of images in a presentation and I'm also going to ask the case officer to comment accordingly once those appear on your respective displays. So thank you everyone for your patience accordingly. That should be visible, colleagues.
Okay, thank you Chair. My name is Hannah Owens and I'm Principal Planning Officer in the North team. Members have a full and complete report before them, which details all matters for consideration and I'll briefly run through this with you. The application before members is following one which was granted last year for the conversion of the property into four units. This application has only one additional unit, for which the principle of the conversion of the building is previously found to be acceptable. This one additional unit will be located within the second floor, where the previous application was left vacant. The development is facilitated by two dormers to the rear, which are of an appropriate size and design, being very small pitched roof dormers. The flat is considered of a generous size, complying with national space standards and will provide a good level of immunity for future occupiers. In terms of impact on neighbouring immunity, the dormers are not considered to give rise to any harmful overlooking or loss of privacy. It is noted that several objections have been raised about the impact from the proposal on the character of the street and associated impact from an additional unit. However, the instruction of a single dwelling is not considered to result in undue immunity impact by way of noise and disturbance, given the limited increase in numbers that this application proposes. No objections are received from our colleagues in highways and four car parking spaces are proposed to the front of the building within the parking court. This is considered an acceptable provision along with cycle parking, which is also to be provided. As there are no further comments to make, officers recommend the application for approval subject to the conditions as laid out in the report. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Hannah? Councillor Hanson. I cannot hear you very well Joe.
Hear me now.
Yes, I can, now and clear.
Okay. A question to Michael, in terms of councillor Radford has already said he wanted to speak and the fact that technology, for whatever reason, did not allow him to speak. Where does that leave us in terms of a legal position? Or, and secondly, given one of our colleagues has asked to speak on a particular item, would we be morally obliged to defer this matter to the next meeting in February?
Thank you councillor Hanson. Some very valid points raised in terms of what you've just commented there. As members will appreciate, I briefly muted my audio feed whilst members were considering a presentation and I've been endeavouring with colleagues to bring councillor Radford in. a presentation and I'd be endeavouring with colleagues to bring Council Radford in on an audio basis only, so he's been provided with an additional alternative contact mechanism. If I would ask colleagues to wait for a few minutes while he endeavours to dial in, obviously in the event that he's unable to join, there are two options. I can either very briefly pause proceedings with your consent and I can take some views and representations from Council Radford and I can report them directly to yourselves full and on his behalf. If that's not considered acceptable to either yourselves or Council Radford, then clearly the option will be available to defer, consider the application to our next available meeting, which the Chair alluded to, will be reverted to a three-weekly cycle, so be in approximately three weeks' time. So if you bear with me for a few moments while we see if Council Radford is able to enjoy and join us, obviously I appreciate your patience accordingly.
Thank you. I think that's a good compromise, Michael. I do know that Council Radford did try and get in because I actually admitted him once, but I presume it didn't work. And I know that Council Radford's been in telephone contact with us as a committee before and that has worked, so hopefully we'll be able to get his comments because I'd rather not defer because this has already been deferred once, but I do want to get his comments if we can.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously whilst we await Council Radford trying to join us, if the Chair and members of the committee would indulge me briefly whilst I again mute my audio and camera feed, just endeavour to make direct contact to do take details in terms of what his issues are on the application, whether they are specific objections. So bear with me for a few moments while I take that action for you.
I see that Steve's waiting in the lobby now, so I think we'll be hearing from him shortly with any luck.
That should be correct, Chair. I've just admitted him immediately to the meeting. Try again.
So I don't know if you're out there, Steve, but we're waiting to hear your comments, Steve Radford.
Unfortunately, it doesn't appear to be actually letting him in by virtue of a potential issue with his external device, Chair. I'm endeavouring to repeat the action again. Chair, if you bear with me, I will say I'm going to mute my audio and video and I'm going to contact Council Radford directly to try and take his representations, just to assist in this process. So thank you, everyone. Thank you, colleagues, for your patience and forbearance. So I've now had a detailed conversation with Council Radford and obviously I'm now in a position to be able to report in terms of his concerns on the application. In terms of the application concerned, he has had regard to obviously the material circulated in advance of the meeting and would like to object on behalf of himself and his fellow ward colleagues to the particular application before committee. There's a number of concerns Council Radford would like to draw to your attention. First of all is the critical status of the road upon which the property is located. This represents essentially what is predominantly one of the last remaining wholly traditional nature residential roads within the Stony Croft area. Obviously, the introduction of a conversion of this particular type, Council Radford and his colleagues, is particularly concerned that this will have a destabilising impact on the community and in turn will start to have cumulative impacts and further exacerbate and cause a decline in the local area and therefore affecting the residential immunity of current occupiers and potential future occupiers as well. Similarly, there was a number of concerns raised in terms of the scale of development and the intensification of usage, which are such to constitute an overdevelopment of the actual premises. And again, these in turn have knock-on effects in terms of the harm to the immunity of adjacent residents, both immediately opposite and immediately adjacent to the application premises themselves. And again, it's comments from the ward councillor in terms of the cumulative negative impacts such developments have on community cohesion, crime, a noise, nuisance and antisocial behaviour and the associated impacts on utilities and local services, for example, waste and refuse collection and indeed the local sewage systems. Again, any increase in occupation places more pressure on those systems. That, I believe, completely summarised the comments raised by Council Radford and also I've expressed thanks to Council Radford for his patience in terms of the technological issues which can occasionally occur. Chair, at this juncture as well, I note that Council Hanson is not fully visible on screen. If Council Hanson has been listening, thank you, you are present, that helps, thank you. Chair, if we could revert to you if there are any questions at this stage.
Yes, I'd like to invite any questions, but also to invite our case officer to comment on the additional comments we've had from Council Radford. Bearing in mind, we're not talking about a house of multiple occupation here, we are talking about what is our desire preferred option on these larger houses, which is that we have self-contained flats. Hannah, if I could pass over to you again, then don't seem to be any other points. If you could just answer the points we've received from Council Radford, if you would.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try and go through the point that Council Radford made. I mean, as you rightly say, Chair, the property itself has already been given permission for the conversion into four residential units. This application before you today is for the increase of the property to accommodate five units. The additional unit is going to be located within the second floor space, where previously it's too left vacant and the flats itself, which is to be created, is of a very generous size. It meets the national space standards and the property itself, being a very, very large semi-detached property, is the type of dwellings which we would consider to be appropriate for the conversion into flats. The flats themselves, I mean, we aren't considering the previous application that was before you, but all five units are very generous flats and appropriate for self-contained living. This isn't an application for a house of multiple occupation, it is only an application for one single dwelling. The comments that Council Radford made in terms of the impact on the character of the road as a result of the conversions of the property, they are noted and they are addressed in the report. It is appreciated that during the last couple of years, there's a number of applications on this road, conversions of large properties into self-contained flats. The impact of these conversions are considered in the report both cumulatively and on an individual basis and it was found that the impact on the street from the conversion of the properties is acceptable. It won't harm the residential character of the street to a detrimental degree and as such, officers find that to be appropriate. There's no objections to the application from our colleagues in environmental health by way of impact from noise and disturbance and it's not considered that the increase of the property to accommodate one additional dwelling would result in comings and goings to the property over and above that which was previously considered acceptable for the conversion of the building into five units. Matters of sewage aren't matters which we take into consideration via the planning process, but matters of waste are. Appropriate bin storage facilities are provided within the front immunity space within the car parking area and this is considered to be appropriate. I do appreciate Council Radford's comments in terms of the concerns raised by local residents. There have been a number of conversions within this road. However, this application in front of members today is solely for the increase of one unit in a property that has already been given consent to be converted and as such, officers consider that this increase of one unit is considered to be appropriate.
Are there any questions for Hannah? Council Juarez.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The report says that 50 letters were sent out for consultation to neighbours. You received 24 back objecting to the application. I mean, this is quite a high percentage really because it's almost 50% who don't want this kind of development in their road and they highlight some problems that, you know, it's the wrong type of the development. By the sounds of it, it sounds as if local residents are fed up with the overdevelopment of the properties in this particular area. You know, they're worried about car parking issues and that, you know, eight properties on this road, neighbouring properties are all HMOs. So I think by the looks of it, from all these objections, that people are sick to the back teeth of HMOs and they would like their little road to be brought back to, you know, where families live and there's a cohesion, there's a community spirit there, but it doesn't seem that, you know, houses in multiple occupation is giving families that cohesion that they need.
But Council Juarez, we've made it clear that this is not a house of multiple occupation. The notes are planning officer and I myself as Chair. This is not a house of multiple occupation.
I'm highlighting 24 objections, Chair, and out of 50, that's quite a high number. So obviously people are quite concerned about their community by saying, you know, oh, it's okay to increase it by one more number, it's okay to put one more flat, it's okay to convert, you know, another little house into an eight-bedroom, nine-bedroom accommodation. You know, this does have an impact on, you know, on people's lifestyles down their road.
Yes, but it's not a house of multiple occupation. Hannah, have you got any further comments?
Thank you, Chair. I do completely appreciate the objections raised by neighbours and there are a lot of objections raised to this application. I do feel like there have been a lot of applications on this road for conversions of properties and the neighbours have equally objected in such numbers to each application. I think what we need to be mindful of here is the application in front of us, which is for the increase of one unit. And would a house with five flats be any more, sorry, would a property with five flats be any more harmful in terms of the noise and disturbance of movement to and from that property than a single dwelling? And the opinions of your officers are that it wouldn't. The second floor is vacant and it would remain vacant if it wasn't to be converted into the single dwelling house. As the Chair rightly stated, it's not a house of multiple occupation, it is to create a single self-contained unit, which is of very generous size proportions and it's not considered that the increase in movement and noise and disturbance associated with that one single unit is any more detrimental within the use of the property, either as a dwelling or as four separate units of accommodation and which is why we consider it to be appropriate in this case. But we do appreciate the objections received and we do note that they are numerous.
I don't see any other comments or indications. And as a planning committee, of course, we always do have to take into account residents' objections. However, we also need to think about citywide issues and about our local plan, which did say that for houses that are overly large for the modern family, that we prefer a conversion to flats, which this does represent. And we also have some off-street car parking. So on those grounds, I'm going to move that this recommendation be approved. Is that agreed? I cannot hear you, Michael.
Apologies, Chairs. Apologies, Chairs, just a few issues with the audio at the moment, as you can appreciate. Before I move to the votes, I'm noting the resolution you've moved, are there any further comments from members on the meeting? Don't appear to be, no? In which case, we'll move straight to the votes. Chair, your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Council Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you. Council Conception.
Agreed.
Thank you. Council Hanson. Can you just repeat your vote, please, Joe?
Agreed.
Thank you. Council Marat. Council Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you. And Council Juarez. Still on mute, please, Council Juarez.
Sorry, against.
Would you like your dissent recorded by name as well?
Yes, please, Michael.
Thank you. Just to confirm, that concludes the voting on this particular application. Are those members present and eligible to vote? We have six in favour, one against, which is Council Juarez. On that basis, the application is therefore approved. That concludes today's items of business and certainly thank you to colleagues on the call, to the Chair, deputy chairs and colleagues for your patience and forbearance whilst I contacted Council Radford and obviously ensured that his comments and those of his ward colleagues were fully represented to today's meeting. As you can appreciate, the technology can on occasion be unreliable. What we do as ever, as you will note, make every possible effort to ensure every voice is heard, which is consistent with the approach of this committee.
Thank you very much, everybody, for your attendance today. Thank you for your care and your help, Michael, with difficult technical problems and we will be seeing each other in three weeks, but on a Tuesday. Thank you, everyone. Bye.
Thank you, colleagues. And just to confirm, the livestream will now be ended. Thank you, colleagues.